Here.
Here.
And we'll go ahead and start with the pledge. Stan, would you like to lead us with the pledge? Thank you, Stan. All right, we'll hop into approval of minutes.
I request a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes of February the 12th and the special meeting work session minutes on February the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second roll call.
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Freeman, and Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, departmental updates. Chief Broxman.
Thank you. Carl Billhart and I continue to offer tours of the police department headquarters for people to come in and take a look. We do that on a weekly basis and our next one is on Monday of next week. That's all I have.
That's great. Chief Wright?
Good evening. Give a quick update on the fire engine. It's in Spring Borough. The check cleared this morning, so we hopefully will have the truck here early next week. Road closures, I think everybody's aware that I think everything's about closed around the township. Bradbury will be open on the 21st, hopefully. And then I think I brought up a few months back, once Bradbury is open as part of that water main project, Nine Mile will close for a duration after that at some point. We don't have dates yet. And then 749 is closed. It's anticipated for 145 days. We talked to the contractor earlier this week. They hope to be done sooner than that. But from being here, there's a lot of traffic on on Locust Corner and I'm sure Cole and Wagner, so.
And these are, these are county, these aren't our.
They're all county projects, all related to water mains. And then White Oak from Beheimer to Merlin, they've, you're in the intersection up there. Hopefully they've, those connections are about done, so that project should hopefully be winding down here in the near future, which will be nice to have something back open. I wanted to let you know, we started the Clermont County All Hazard Mitigation Plan update. There was a meeting last week. Gets done every five years, so I'm representing the town, Pierce Township and Ohio, as well as the fire chiefs on the committee. So there will be some stuff that comes out later on with some surveys. Part of the statute is getting some public input. So once we have that information, we'll put it out on the website and social media and keep you updated if anything that that you need to be aware of with it. All right, the last thing I have is last month, we received a Whole Learner Network Award for being a partner in education from West Clermont. We were nominated by the principal at Merlin Elementary, just for all the programs and the support the fire department does for Merlin Elementary.
That's great.
That is all I have.
Nice work. Appreciate it. Thanks, Craig. All right, Service Director Kohler.
Don't really have a whole lot. We did start on the curb work as far as curb replacement for the for the paving program this year. So we've gotten started on that. It's kind of an early start. We got some good weather, so we want to jump all over. What I got?
All right. All right, call for it. Doug, what do you got?
Let's see, the work day, Parks Work Day, we rescheduled to Saturday, April the 5th. That's from nine to 1:00 p.m. is kind of due to some availability of some of the key volunteers. Easter egg hunt scheduled for the 12th, 10:00 to noon. We have received the, all the candy, the pre-filled eggs and all that, so we're ready to go as far as that. And we've got our volunteer for the costume, which I thought looked good in the pictures. And then the concerts for June 21st and August 23rd. Those are on the agenda tonight as far as the approval for Leroy.
Thanks, Doug.
Yep.
Right, so the Amelia Care Center is being redeveloped. They have a conditional use permit on the agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals at the end of the month. And I've also been working with Brenda Weimer on putting a TIF together to present to the board, but probably be like a 1075, that sort of thing. Assist with the infrastructure needs in that area. The salute to leaders is scheduled for April 9th, 5:30 p.m. Unfortunately, it does conflict with our standing April trustees meeting. So if this board is so inclined, I'd recommend looking at either the 8th or the 10th for potentially rescheduling this regularly held meeting.
You guys. Either one.
Yeah, 8th would work better.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do Tuesday, the 8th to move the trustee meeting?
Yep.
Same time, 6:30?
I'm good with that, sorry.
Everybody good?
Yeah, I didn't realize that was a question.
Yeah, we're good. We're making good time. All right, so Eddie, what else you got?
The last thing I have is on the White Oak Water Main Project, we received a letter from Rich with the county requesting an easement. So there were no other more specifics added other than that, so I did ask for more information. So likely at your next meeting, we'll have, we'll have somebody to present on that.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Eddie.
Sure.
All right, we have an executive session we're going to hop into. I wouldn't anticipate this taking too long. It should be in and out fairly quick, but we're going to have to make a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the employment dismissal discipline or compensation of a public employee. So should I read that entire thing?
You read that.
Probably. All right, so just to be sure, we're looking for a motion to adjourn into executive session as presented by Ohio revised code, section 121.22G1, to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, or compensation of a public employee to have a motion.
Motion. Seconded.
Motion in a second? Roll call?
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Kelly.
Yes. We'll be right back. Motion in a second, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of bills for the month of February in the amount of 403,817.
So moved, second.
Motion, second, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Freeman, Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to approve resolution 2025-006, a resolution to approve the Clermont County 911 plan.
So moved, seconded.
Motion, second, roll call?
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Kelly.
Oh, Stan, sorry.
Oh, Stan.
Come on up.
There's always one.
Hop on up. Hop on up, skip up there.
The next motion is to do with the warm-up TIF. I'd like an explanation of that because in all of the time we've been here, which is 25, 20 years, I've never seen anything mentioning payments to West Clermont School. Now, they were trying to explain to me that it's part of the original TIF, but that's never been mentioned when we've talked about the TIF. The discussions we've had about the TIF, would we build a fire station down there? Could we use the money for the roads around it? Could we do this? Could we do that? That was never mentioned.
Right.
So I'd like, I'd like an explanation to get into the record of why it is. And also, I would like an explanation of why it's West Clermont Schools. And it doesn't mention New Richmond, when I believe that a larger proportion of the township is When I believe that a larger proportion of the township is in West, is in New Richmond rather than West Claremont.
Which one are we talking about, Stan? What?
Uh, number five.
I got you, okay. Well, that's Broxsterman's, I don't know.
I have one above that one.
All right. Debbie, you wanna?
Appropriation.
Start out that. Which tip?
He, he was just too anxious and he wanted to get to it really quick.
Okay.
So he jumped, he jumped the shark a tad.
Well, we have to make, th- this is a tw- this is a thirty year TIF that was done way back when. Way before I was here and, and it was agreed upon to make this West Claremont Schools whole. So, because it's a hu- what, a hundred percent TIF that we get the funds from. This, and then we have to reimburse them twice a year.
So the way the state law works on TIFs is that when you have a ten seventy five TIF, which is what we've oftentimes used, there is no negotiation with the school. So there's no reimbursement, so we don't do this. When you have a longer term TIF, you go into a thirty year TIF, you have to negotiate with the schools. And it doesn't matter what, you know, what school districts you have around you, the TIF is associated with the parcel in the school district that the parcel is in. So we would then have to notify all of the schools, but we'd have to negotiate with West Claremont. And so that's why this is, has been done because back in twenty oh four, oh five, when the TIF was originally signed, it was negotiated with West Claremont Schools. And it was, it was stated that they would get paid their portion so that the school would be made semi-whole on the, on the, uh, the TIF. And then we would get the rest. And so that's why we would do it uniquely for this one, but not necessarily for say the, the Presswick TIF because Presswick is a ten seventy five. So that's, that's why you haven't seen us do this often, but we do this with this parcel every year.
Every year.
We're required to by the, the, uh, the letter of the, um, of the agreement that we signed with West Claremont Schools.
Is that Clarisma, Stan?
Yeah.
Here we are.
Oh, look at him.
Round two.
No.
That's gonna be shot up out of there, look at that.
It's a hundred and, whatever, a hundred and five, a hundred and thousand dollars. Um, that's a hell of a lot, it's a one-time payment.
So.
Is it more than, is it more than one year?
But this is something that we've agreed upon when the TIF was established.
Right.
Right, so what, what we did is we went, and the ten seventy five stuff, I think, is what we're referring to is if you're, if you're under seventy five percent of the tax revenue getting diverted and under ten years of that tax revenue getting diverted, am I right on that? Then you don't have to sort of ask for approval, you just do it as a township and you can just go ahead and TIF that money, which is what we've done, I, I think with Presswick. And then that allows you to spend that money in ways that are directly impactful to residents. So it allows us to take certain revenues that would typically divert to the county and spend them on things that are directly advantageous to residents that live in that area essentially. And, and, and so, but at some point, it wasn't our, our board, I don't think, I don't know, but a board at some point did a TIF that they had to ask per- permission. So they exceeded that seventy five percent or the ten years or both. And now they have to kind of negotiate with the schools to give the schools essentially a kickback for that tax revenue that we were diverting, uh, away from its typical sources. Does that make sense?
Yeah, except that it's a hell of a lot of money.
Well, this is for three years because we were not invoiced from them for three years until I. So until I contacted them to see, but they were in the midst of changing treasurer.
But at the same time, let, let's let Stan know what, in that period of time, what we received as our portion of that TIF.
Oh, but we, oh, I don't have to put it, oh, but right now there's like a million four in there. There was more than that because, but we did use some for roads at that time for those house bills that did come.
But we're growing i- in, in the TIF on an annual basis, we're growing somewhere on a two hundred and sixty, two hundred and eighty thousand dollar clip.
Okay.
So when you're looking at three hundred and eighty and they haven't billed us for three years, you can see that our, our take is.
Hundred and three a year, okay. Okay, so, so the one point four that's left couldn't get used for the Times Mahal, okay.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's a good deal or a bad deal, what I'm saying is we didn't make the deal, it wasn't our deal, so we have to.
Yeah, yeah, it was different people back then.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's different factors is how we figure this up to what we owe them and I did double triple check them.
This is the right number.
So do we have any more, uh, public comment on, uh, the new business item we weren't even on? Now you all may confuse Stan, what, what, which one are we on again?
We should be on four, but we're on five.
We're on five.
Five to me is Broxsterman.
Yep, okay.
Oh, you have a different.
So Debbie, are you done with all your motions?
No, I, I've got two more.
Let's go ahead and do that one.
Yeah, let's knock yours out and then we'll move on. So, um, Stan, thanks for your input, no other input? Okay, Debbie, go ahead.
I request a motion to approve a one-time payment of three hundred eight thousand seven thirty five fifty one from the Walmart TIF to West Claremont School District in order to cover the net distribution request for the years twenty, twenty twenty two through twenty twenty four.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, seconded.
Motion and second, discussion.
Think we had that?
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to approve the twenty twenty five appropriations that were sent out to everybody.
I make the motion, seconded.
Motion and second, roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And I do have one more that's not on there. Um, I do have a payment that's due to Sedwick, which is a renewal of our insurance Ohio Workers Comp Group rating of six thousand one twenty five.
Motion.
Why wasn't it on the thing? I just want to know.
Because we just got it in and I needed to get it on here so I can get a pay. And it's my time for under my fiscal office.
And are we, uh, do we bid this out at all or how does, I don't know, I just make sure I do to my due diligence as a board member, what's, what's going on with this? We just, we sort of rubber stamp this each year or what, what's going on?
What?
The, the Sedwick payment that we're about to make.
We pay it every year.
Okay.
It's just a renewal.
I got you. For health insurance.
For Workers Compensation Group Rating Program.
Workers Comp.
Mm-hmm.
I'm motioned.
I have a motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. All right. Uh, Chief Broxman.
I request a motion to carry over a hundred and seventy nine vacation hours from twenty twenty four.
Make a motion. I'll second it.
Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
I was so tempted to tease you about this, but I'm just not gonna do it, I'm gonna just, you know, yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. All right, Chief Broxman.
I request a motion to pay an invoice from Sundan Systems Incorporated for fourteen thousand three forty. The invoice covers the annual renewal of the Police Department's records management system. This cost was included in the department's five-year capital expenditures.
So moved, second.
Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. All right, um, Chief Broxman.
I request a motion to pay an invoice from Axon Enterprises Incorporated for nine thousand five thirty three oh two. The invoice covers the annual lease agreement in the department's body worn cameras. This cost was included in the department's five-year capital expenditures.
So moved, second.
Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes. All right, Chief Wright.
I request a motion to accept the resignation of part-time firefighter paramedic Jacob Tool effective March fifth, two thousand twenty five.
So moved, second.
Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Chief Wright.
I request a motion to approve the purchase of two Motorola APX six thousand XE portable radios and associated equipment from Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred sixty two dollars and twenty six cents.
So moved, second.
Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Chief Wright.
I request a motion to approve the purchase and installation of striping, lettering, and graphics for the new fire engine from Sign Pro in the amount of two thousand eight hundred dollars.
So moved, seconded.
Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And I request a motion to approve the appointment of Jared Brewer as a part-time firefighter paramedic at the, at the established rate pending successful completion of an Ohio BCI back criminal background check effective March sixteenth, two thousand twenty five, noting we're just awaiting the results of the background check.
So moved, seconded.
Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Service Director Kohler.
I request a motion to, to purchase a Culver pipe, a thirty inch Culver pipe from Corin Maine in the amount of five thousand six hundred and ninety five dollars and tw- and twenty cents. It's a hundred and twenty foot of pipe and it's for East Legendary.
So I'm a second.
Who came up with the twenty cents? Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. All right, Coral.
Uh, requesting a motion to approve the payment of nine thousand five hundred dollars to Leroy Ellington production for the services of Dat Band and Denim Deluxe, as well as the production of both concerts. Parks budget funds will be used for these expenses.
So moved, seconded.
Um, just, just a quick, um, I just, how, how long have we been using Leroy Ellington? And is, um, is this something that we've bid out annually or whatever? And I'm not really trying to cause waves, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this, but. Okay, and they're just a contractor sort of in between us and the band where they kind of. Yep, and you guys have been happy with them? Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. All right, Eddie.
I request a motion to approve the conditional appointment of Ms. Christine Selsor to the position of Director of Planning and Community Development at a starting salary of eighty two thousand a year and initial starting date of March twenty sixth. The position is subject to a six-month probationary period and pre-employment screening. The position will also be covered under the Township Zoning Inspector bond.
This is the position vacated by, um.
It was by Pryor.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So moved, uh, second, yes.
Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to approve the Pierce Township wage and salary policy for non-union staff.
So moved, seconded.
Motion and second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. All right, we have reached the public comment, open floor discussion portion of our meeting. Does anybody want to come up and talk nonsense or sense or whatever? Come on up. Yes.
Good afternoon, members of the board, staff, fellow residents. Um, I appreciate your time tonight, um, and your patience, this is my first time ever doing this. Um, my name is Heim Grinspan, um, I've spoken to some of you already. Um, and, uh, I am from Sedona Ridge, um, I don't know if I need to give any more details.
That's okay, you're fine, man.
All right, so, uh, the background of this a little bit, years ago, we've had a petition to set up a lighting district in Sedona Ridge, I'm sure you've heard this on and on. Um, so I understand that it did not reach a fifty one percent, um, I think that was the required signage for that. My goal here today is to state my intent to bring this up again. Um, and really, the final goal being to attempt to get the lights turned back on, um, both for Sedona Ridge or, um, Bell Creek as well, um, or at least attempt to. One thing I do want to reiterate is, um, that I understand fully that the residents take on this on this. This is why I'm here. I'm here to tell you that I'm here to help lead this, um, and take on this for this. Um, I understand you all, um, I'm not sure who all, but I understand that you as an entity here for the township have done quite a bit already throughout the years for this. Um, what I don't know is why wouldn't it reach a, a, a solution for this? And, and I'm not going to speculate, I'm a facts-driven person, um, I don't like emotion to drive it. So my goal is information. My goal is to inform the public, inform my fellow residents, I'm here to hopefully represent them as well. Um, I am joined by a small team of my fellow residents who have graciously taken a part with me in this initiative. And I know that there are others as well that are very interested in this, so I've seen more interest this year than I have in the past. Um, once, one thing I've found that there seems to be confusion, I'm not going to speculate why. I just want to move forward and inform them, and if we reach a, a good conclusion, great. If we fail, then, you know, my goal is to have reached everyone in the community if I can. And understand and know that they are informed regardless of the outcome of this. So how are we going to do this? Information and homeowner reach is important for me. Information, accurate understanding of cost implication of these things. Understanding of the mechanism of the action steps that come after signing fifty one percent petition. Homeowner reach onsite meetings for residents, ask questions to present subject matter experts. Have boots on the ground, this is where I think. This is the part that I don't know that happened, it's part of it. And I mean that from the resident's standpoint. It is time for us as the residents to take ownership of this and do something about it. And I am here to lead this through the whole way if I can and help the residents understand the implications and understand everything to do with this and also communicate with those who are subject matter experts of this. Um, so in that, in saying that, I want to facilitate the access to the petition and information for as many as possible, and that's how I see my role. So what has been done so far? Well, I've started community awareness of this, a lot of it, there was conversation online regarding this whole thing. Um, so, uh, somebody had to step up, so I had to step up and, like I said, there's a small group that stepped up with me um, to tell the public, we are going to work to get you information on this, but it is up to us. I keep reiterating that because that is important to understand. Um, I have spoken to township staff already, representatives who've been gracious enough to give me their time to help me understand not only the background, but also what needs to happen to move forward. Um, I'm looking for objective guidance and facts about the initiative, that is key. Um, I have spoken with Duke Energy as well, I have reached out to them to understand their cost, their formula. Um, actually, just today, one of the members in our group found out the amount of parcels, which ones are rentals, which ones are homeowners and such, as we discussed how to, how to get that information. So what do I need? I need time. I need time to, to make sure that the community feels informed. They want to know what they're paying, they want to understand those things. Um, I need township guidance, what are the gaps of our information? What else do I need to do to make sure our community feels good and informed about this initiative? Um, and what other steps do we need to take? So as a resident, I understand that the onus is on us, I'll keep reiterating as, as much as I go on with this. I'll lead this movement through to the end, if you allow me, pass or fail. With a small group that I have, and I know there are many that are asking how they can help. So at some point, we will get boots on the ground on this and people moving. Um, I want them to be informed fully with accurate information, make informed decisions, pass or fail. I'd rather know that if this fails, that everybody at least understood the information behind this motion. So I want residents to understand also that there are options, an example of that is an HOA or possibly smaller area HOAs to where, again, they need to take the onus to create that further own area if it comes to that. So. Biggest thing, I want to make sure that this is facts-based and not emotionally driven. I will have a plan, I just need your help with guidance. Thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
If, if you wouldn't mind, stick around for a sec.
Yes.
We'll talk about this if, if that's okay, I don't want to make, I don't want to make you uncomfortable, but, um, first and foremost, I appreciate you coming in and, and doing this. I mean, that's, it's admirable and you're trying to do the right thing and, um, stick up for your community and stuff that. um, stick up for your community and stuff that one one thing I will offer a little bit of information about, and I have information on is the HOA part of it, because I have a unique perspective in uh, the HOA I was a part of. And, uh, when I was, uh, younger, I know I'm not that old, but when I was really young, I first moved into a neighborhood, they wrote me into being HOA president because they were like, oh, this guy is stupid and he'll you know, so, um, so I did it. And, um, and and so people would come to me with with certain aspects of the HOA requirements they wanted to be met, usually somebody complaining about somebody else's property where, you know, a fence was set too close to the street or whatever. And ultimately, I looked into the way the neighborhood was platted was that the HOA was set to expire in twenty years. And I think it was platted back in like the the nineties or something. Long story short, the HOA had expired. And, um, so I looked into ways to rein- reinstitute the HOA to to bring it back into and bring covenants, which are the requirements of the HOA, which kind of are the teeth of the HOA back in. And what you needed was a hundred percent signatures. And the reason for that was that anybody that had moved into that neighborhood since that HOA expired did not agree upon the rules and things. So you needed everybody to, does that make sense? You need everybody within that community
Yeah.
to agree upon those rules again. And that was completely non feasible because there was hundreds of houses and clearly somebody was going to say, I don't like that. I'm not agreeing upon that. I'm not going to agree upon more restrictions upon my property type of thing. So to kind of jump forward to what we're dealing with a little bit with it with the lighting district. And 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 anybody else can comment on this in a second. I'm I'm fine with that. I'm just going to offer my perspective real quick. Uh, is that you're going to, we have to do an assessment. And so in order to to put lights back into that, um, area, um, townships don't typically do that. Uh, we're not going to take that tax burden and and distribute it on all the taxpayers. We would have to do it what they call an assessment. But so on each property, we would assess that property for the cost of those particular lights. And as a similar concept, this has gone on for quite some time. You have people moving in our neighborhood that have never agreed to essentially that assessment. So it's kind of like that HOA thing where I moved into the neighborhood, there was not an HOA, there was not a covenant. And now all of a sudden you're going to try to make one.
Sure.
And so that kind of creates a little bit of rub as well. Um, and then furthermore, uh, in order to sort of bring it in in front of the board and that kind of turn that key in in regards to coming back in front of us is to is to something that we would consider, that's the fifty one percent. So you just have to kind of consider, and Eddie can speak more intelligently on where we were at the last time on that percentage, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of information, I think, that, um, I mean, I see it's kind of funny. I I don't see, I see this as a I don't even know if I call it beginning. There's still a long road ahead, I think, with this. And there's a lot of information that I need to find out. A lot of that is that, what is the composition of that percentage from the last time, the last go around, right? Um, the mechanisms that come right after that. I mean, I don't see a fifty one percent, for instance, reach on that as a finality. I almost see that as a beginning to something else essentially, right? So those are the things that I am trying to understand because there's a lot I don't understand. I consider myself naive in this, but I think I'm very open to learning. And, um, I think that is a position with the community. I think is, um, a lot of people I know have stated that they don't understand certain things and they're open to learning. Um, and that's all I want from this. That's that's the primary goal is to be informed. And then after that, we can see if we can get there or not, right?
Sure.
So.
Absolutely.
That makes sense.
Oh, absolutely. Well, we can help with that. We can help with the informing stage for sure.
Yeah, well, I think I think I'm sorry.
No, well, we've talked on offline several times. So I just want to tell you that I'm glad you showed up and brought your concern up to the entire board.
Appreciate that.
So I don't have anything further to add. We've hashed it out. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
To the extent that you want to try to move forward with the petition and try to, you know, start that fresh. Uh, a lot of the the language and and there's a I'm sure Eddie pointed it out to you. There's a whole section on our website where it just talks about the lighting district. Um, that information is pretty is is pretty good information. Um, if you're going to do a petition, I would look at that and can take the petition that we have on there. Um, I believe that your law firm looked through all of that and vetted it. So you could, you know, probably cut and paste and use the language that's on there. Um, we also did put in the price per home. Um, what it would cost as the assessment uh, into the into the 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 language at the beginning of it. I would say that that's probably not accurate anymore. I would try to find what the new number is so that people have a have a solid idea of what what it's going to cost them in real life.
And I I very much appreciate you bringing that up because that is one, one of the reasons why I spoke to Duke is to understand, you know, there's so many lights in this community within this border
Right.
um, for both Sedona and Quail Creek.
Right.
Um, the problem that I don't know is I don't have the full format. So, um, and I know at some point I, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it may involve the amount of parcels and such to have a little bit of an estimated range, right? To have that number. And I would assume that we would look at that petition and probably revise it.
Yeah, you're you're going to have to just because that price, the the price is not accurate.
Yes. And also to be sure the petition and like Alan's referencing that we have the framework for that, like the the verbiage and stuff like that, that's sort of something that we put out as a township to try to help. Like, it's not necessarily something that a township typically does. Really, it's just the petition would really be up to the residents to do sort of a grassroots thing to to get a certain amount of signatures. But we were just with the whole dissolution of the Village of Amelia and everything that happened, we were trying to do the best we could to sort of, you know.
Completely understand and I appreciate that.
And I think just for what it's worth, I mean, like a feasibility analysis on your end would be, you know, very prudent.
Sure.
Eddie, do you do you recall how we came to the actual per house number?
Yeah, we, um, we worked with the county, County GIS Department. And it basically helped us con- construct some different maps and whatnot in order to draw boundaries.
And so that was based on a number that Duke would have given us on how much it would have cost, how much it would cost for X number of poles inside of Sedona Ridge or Coyle Creek.
Yeah, so what Duke has is the, um, there's the fixture costs and then there's the power costs and that sort of thing. And Carl spoke to him pretty recently, but they they they, that's that formula that Mr. Grinspan was talking about.
And I think that's, I think that's going to be, obviously, it's going to be really key because everybody's going to want to know, you know, what if i- in the end, you know, what's it going to cost in American dollars?
Absolutely. Yeah, and and that's a number I do have.
Okay.
For both of them. They've given me those numbers at Duke. I've had some conversations with them, triangulated with some people.
Right.
Um, I'm very fact centered. So
That's good.
I have those numbers.
Yeah, that's good.
I would want to know if I'm going to be paying into our signs.
Oh, yeah, right.
Um, I think that's I'm kind of right now at the, what's my next step?
Right.
Um, I would like to dissect the petition that was there.
Yeah.
Understand the verbiage there and probably ask some questions if possible.
Yeah.
Um, and then maybe possibly revise it if we need to, um, to make sure that, again, that the residents that are looking at this or were talking to understand it better.
I think the real, the other key factor is is that you need to find yourself a deadline.
Sure.
Because nothing, you know, nothing really clarifies the mind better than a deadline, right? So, I mean, I think in this case, this has rolled for a very long time. So I I think, you know, you need to pick yourself a date and say this needs to be done by. And so then we can, if you can get yourself to the fifty one percent or more, then we can take action after that. But that's really the key part. This has to be done by. And then then there's some urgency. And that's what's really a big key here is the urgency. So if people really want it, they they need to take action on it now.
Absolutely. Yeah. And that's that is the message that I'm putting out there. It's up to us.
Right.
I keep, I know I keep reiterating that. I'm sorry that I'm repeating it. But it's something that the residents should.
Well, I think that might even be your slogan, right? You know?
It sounds like.
Go to the community and say it's up to us because the trustees have never blocked it. We've always been, you know, if if it if it came, we were going to consider it uh, fairly. And so I think there's your slogan right there. It's up to us.
You all have been very gracious with the information you provided. So.
No apologies, man. I appreciate, yeah.
No, I have no problem going in front of the residents and saying.
There you go.
Anything, what was your first name?
Heim.
Heim?
Yes.
Okay. Heim, anything else?
I'm sorry.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, anybody else have, uh, any, Stan, please, come on up, hop up like you did with the exuberance of a twenty year old the last time. You jumped out of that seat.
Jeez, not you again.
Yes. In relation to lighting districts, we have a lighting district in, um, legendary.
Yeah.
Uh, would it be helpful, do you think, if Debbie were to give them the data of how much it costs each resident per year? So I think it's like two hundred and forty dollars, hundred and twenty dollars a half a year. Um, so that they get some idea of, um, what it would cost. Because you, I know you've got the the data for you, you have the data from Duke Energy, but, um, it it's it's all, at least we know what ours costs.
Right.
Perhaps, yeah. It could be something you could talk to anybody about.
It would give you a bit of a sense of
Okay.
Dollar amounts.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Anybody else?
Wow, Stan, that was actually useful this time.
It was. Wait a minute.
I brought him back.
And ours, ours is updated too, remember?
Yeah.
Um, where where they came out and they put in the stupid LED lights and so on and so on, right?